The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Today is Tuesday, September 13th, 2016. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to you tonight. We thank you for the abundance that you have provided for us. We thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, because we can turn to you at any time. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that this great nation that you've blessed and put your hand upon sometimes seems to be in peril. And we just ask you, Heavenly Father Jesus, tonight to be with it, to be with each citizen. Heavenly Father Jesus, be with the city council as they make the decisions that's best for our city. Heavenly Father Jesus, you've put them in this position, and we look to them, Heavenly Father, to make the proper positions so that this city will run in a great way. We ask you, Heavenly Father Jesus, to be with our new acting city manager. Help her, Heavenly Father Jesus, as she goes through her daily activities. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, sometimes when we have extra burdens upon us, that we need extra help. And we're asking you, Heavenly Father, to lead and guide her and bless her and be with her. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you be with each citizen in this community, be with the staff of this city. We ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you be with our first responders, our local police and firemen. Watch over them, Heavenly Father, as they protect us at night. We just ask you, Heavenly Father Jesus, to put a band of angels around this city that we have. And we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council authority member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council authority member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council authority member Darlene Barber Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Janine Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There will be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. So, you know, and we're going to start with item 1.1, proclaiming September 17th through September 23rd, Constitution Week. We so proclaim it, and we will issue our proclamation to Ms. Karen Montgomery, who will be accepting the proclamation on behalf of the Daughters of American Revolution. Oh, she just walked in? I'm going to take this back. Thank you very much for being here. I thought that...
Thank you.
There was going to be a little bit of wind. Stay up there. All right. The City of Riverbank Proclamation, Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2016 marks the 229th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And to the patriotic celebrations which will commence... Just commemorate it. Just a second. Let me put my glasses on. Whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd, 2016, as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Council of the City of Riverbank that the week of September 17th through the 23rd is Constitution Week. And we ask all of our citizens to reaffirm the ideas that the framers of the Constitution had in 1770-87 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Signed today, September 13th, 2016. We'll take care of that. Okay, but anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And will you accept it on behalf of the board? And you may say a couple of words if you so desire. Even faster than he does.
So, well, shall I? Thank you so much. My name is Karen Montgomery. I'm region of the Major Humus Chapter that covers... We have membership in the Stanislaus County area, and we appreciate very much the proclamation for Constitution Week. Thank you.
You. Item 2, Public Comment. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and with the subject matter's jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. For tonight, I'd like to invite our new chief of the Stanislaus County Consolidated Fire Department. Chief, would you please come on up and just introduce yourself to the community? And again, congratulations.
Thank you. I've had a chance to meet some of you already. My name is Matt Daly. I'm from Illinois. I live right outside of Chicago in the suburbs. Saw this job opening here in Stanislaus County. I thought it was an excellent opportunity, so I went for it. And I saw some of you in the interviews and stuff, so I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to be representing Consolidated Fire. And we really enjoy having you guys as a major partner with us, and we really look forward to working with you in the future. And we want to continue to provide excellent service for you guys, so I'm looking forward to meeting the rest of you very soon, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief. Chief, I know you have pressing business, so thank you very much. Do we have any further public comment?
Good evening, council members and Mayor O'Brien. My name is Vicki Holt, and I'm the branch manager at the Riverbank Library. And I brought a very big library card to encourage everybody to sign up for their library card. It's National Library Card Sign-Up Month, so if you don't have one of these, make sure and come by the library and get one.
Check out the bigger books if with a bigger card?
I would allow that.
Larger print.
So, we have programming at the library, and I want to let you know about what's happening this month. Storytime has started back up. It's on Mondays at 10:30. It continues until November. Mayor Brian comes in for our Mayor Book Club every first Monday of the month, right after my storytime, so he's at 11 o'clock. And I want to thank you for reading to the kids and promoting early childhood literacy. I'm excited to announce, I'm so excited, we're starting a bilingual storytime. It's going to be on Tuesdays, starting October 11th. It'll be every other Tuesday at 10:30, and Maria's doing it for me, so I'm very excited. It's going to be Spanish and English books, and it'll be every other Tuesday. So, tomorrow, we have a free citizenship class, and it's at 6:00 PM. Then, on the 20th, we have a button-making craft for teens and tweens, and we also have a Wii game console for them to play games. So, the size of the buttons that they'll be making is this, it's 1 and 3/4 inch. So, they can bring their own pictures from home, they can sift through magazines that we've set aside, or they can draw their own. They can be as creative as they want. We have two healthy aging workshops that are coming up. September 27th at 11:00, we're doing Fall Prevention, and then on October 5th at 11:00, they're both Tuesdays, right? I think so. That one is going to be Nutrition for Older Adults. So, we have a book club every month. This month, we're reading Divine Secrets of the Yah-Yah Sisterhood by Rebecca Wells. It's always on the fourth Tuesday of the month, and it's at 4:00. All our programs at the library are free to the public. It's because of our Eighth of Ascent's dedicated sales tax that these library services are available. You're always welcome at the library. Please come and see us. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Scott McRitchie, City of Riverbank, and mayor and members of city council. I sent you all an email and got no response, so I'm going to plead again a little bit. And that is that the water thing is still out of control. The people over in the water department are very kind, and they explain things best they can, but we have some real things that are bothersome to me about it. One is we have a rate increase of 15%, and that's fine and dandy. But my bill compared to last year, and I read every day for four months, and my readings jived with the city. But my usage suddenly jumped twice as much as what it was last year, and so my bill is 65% greater than it was a year ago. Now, I compare it to my neighbors. My neighbors have kids, they have pools, they have all sorts of stuff going. Washing machines going all the time, so the kids are always needing clean clothes. Theirs is less than mine. Their house is bigger, everything else, so there's something a little bit wrong with that. Now, it could be that the oil meter was sloppy, and it didn't get all my water. So, when I leave town sometime or another, I'm shutting the whole water system off at my house to see if there's any leaks. Now, the people have come out and talked about the leak detector, and it's really a neat deal, but it's not quite in place yet. In November, they'll have everything done, and then they can do that. If your house is leaking on a 24-hour basis, the sensor can tell you that. So, in other words, unless you're drinking water or washing clothes or something all night long, if there's water still going out, then you have a leak, and that'll be great. But it's just, I was surprised and shocked when my bill was higher than most of my neighbors', and most of them have more stuff going on than I do. That's one thing. The other thing is I still haven't gotten an explanation of whether we read at the well and everybody else reads somewhere else. I still don't know why we're at 40% over, and the other cities were 35% under in the middle of the winter, and what's going on? So, I proposed that we have either a committee, or a consultant, or an auditor, or somebody to tell us where all this water's going. Now, I've heard from our ex-city manager that actually per capita, we're one of the stingiest water users in the county, and yet we have the worst record. And now, we're not being pressed as heavily by the state to do our reductions, even though we're still on two-day waterings only. But where are we compared to others now? Is it just that our whole infrastructure's shot, or are we measuring different? If we measured the usage through the meters, I know it would be a lot less, because we're watering parks, we're watering this, that, and the other thing that aren't metered, but they are measuring at the wells. So, I'm not happy with it. I'm happy with the people. They're all great, but I'm not happy with the results. And the other thing that I thought is not right is that they put in the new smart meters, and then they dug them up and put in the new shell, the new box. Now, the guys digging the boxes aren't the rocket scientists that put together the meter. So, it just seemed to me they should either put the meter boxes in first or do it concurrently, have one guy in there digging the hole for the meter, and the next guy right behind with it, do-dad to put in there. But the way they're doing it, it's not right. My neighbor got her driveway dug up, because ours happened to be in the driveway and not on the lawn. And when I do my walks, there's probably about 10% or 15% of those that are dug up along the street. And here, this guy, and this guy, and this guy has the same old meter box, and this one's dug up. And why they didn't just go down the street and get them all, I don't know. Most of these are the old metal type, and they're no good anymore. You have to have the new ones in there. So, there's a lot of these things that I just don't feel comfortable about. I'm not too happy with my bill, but we will pay it, and that's not a problem. But it's just, there seems to be a lot of slack in this thing, and I don't know if there's just different parts in the infrastructure of the city that have one part of it. But there's nobody seemingly looking at the whole thing to coordinate all this stuff. Amen? Thank you.
Before you leave, when did you send out the email? I'm going through July. Have not seen you at all.
I don't know. I sent it out to all five. I don't remember when I sent it out. I don't have it here, but anyhow, I did.
Okay, approximately when you sent it out?
With my brain, I can't tell you. I have so much stuff going on, and I'm getting older.
Could you do me a favor and resend what you did? What, just because I don't see it, at least not in this email here, and you're not in spam. I looked there.
Yeah, if I can find it. Usually, once I do that, I send it out, then I don't worry about it anymore and delete all that stuff, but anyhow.
Any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. I have a little report on these chairs that I got from the Del Rio Theater. You guys willing to dispose of them? Okay, I got... Jacob Myers, he got a couple of checks already, but I've got a little problem here. I got some chairs that need some maintenance work done, and they're patio chairs, and they need armrests. These armrests could cost $8 each, and the condition of the chair, I don't think I will be able to get $10 for a chair. So, I want to know what you guys want me to do, see if I can give them away or do something with them. Now, I had eight office chairs I repaired, castled, cleaned the best I could, but the stain was out of sight. So, the Veterans First organization started up there across from the bank, Delta Bank. I donated those eight chairs to them. I hope that's all right with everybody. Okay, then, let's get down a little further. I got four regular chairs. We got that sold, so, okay, I'm down here. I got a check here for five chairs I sold for 50 bucks that goes to Jacob Myers. I don't know what you guys want to do about the chairs. I'd like to get hold of Jacob Myers and see what they want to do about the chairs.
Sure, you can get ahold of me. If you'd like to hand the check to the city clerk, we'll...
Is that... I've got Jacob Myers on it, so no problem.
We'll make sure it goes to the right pot of money.
Oh, yeah, I don't doubt that. It's just that I got these left chairs, and what do you guys want me to do with them? Who do I see? I go into the office Monday or tomorrow, and maybe they can give me an answer.
Yes, if you'd like to come and see me tomorrow, Eddie, then we can discuss that.
Pacific time?
Yes.
I'm so busy, you know. Yeah, okay, I'll come and see you tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Any further public comment? Maricel, could you comment on any of the items that we had today, or provide information?
Yes, so as Mr. McRitchie mentioned, we did have a rate increase that went into effect with this billing. So, that added approximately $20 to the billing that everybody will be receiving this week. And so, that does account for a majority of the increase when you're comparing your billing from this year to last year. With regards to the information that we're collecting in order to calculate whether we're meeting the conservation order or not, that information that we are using is collected from our well production. And so, I'm not sure if Michael has any information on whether any of the other cities are using similar information or whether it's information collected from the meter.
Plus, we also use a baseline per month or bimonthly, but per month is about 3,700 gallons per household. Per month is what you're authorized before you get into anything above. So, if you're using more than 3,700 gallons, then you should see an increase above the baseline.
And one of the things that Mr. McRitchie can take a look at too, and it's currently online, is our self-certification that we're required to do with the State of California on our water conservation. So, within the self-certification, it shows several years of usage, the per capita per day, and it's all online. So, just look for the self-certification on the front page, and it'll give you all the information you want. If you've got any questions, feel free to give me a call. It compares us to the state, basically. So, we were required to do this, two reasons why we were required to do this. Because of the amount of rain that we had last year through the winter, and they deemed it as the drought not being quite as bad because of that relief that we did receive. And because of the way they had originally set things up that basically set us up for failure from the get-go, they took a different approach to this. And that approach is that we had to prove the amount of water we had available to us, and we also had to approve whether or not we could supply water for the next three years if the drought continues and not have a shortfall. So, if we prove that we don't have a shortfall, then in essence, they set us with a 0% conservation rate, which is what we now have from the state. Also, in that process, because we took a look at the past years, and we also took a look at the 2010 Urban Water Management Plan. And when that was enacted, we were required to reduce our water use in the city by 20% by 2020. And we actually achieved that 20% in 2015. And we're currently going through our 2015 Urban Water Management Plan update. So, we're way ahead of the curve, and with everything that we did in the past as we were required to by the state because of what occurred with the emergency declarations by the governor. Once we did the self-certification, we were able to have a conversation with the State of California Office of Enforcement, and we're successful in getting them to lift the conservation order that we're currently under. We're no longer under that conservation order.
But we will continue to conserve, and we're, as you say, above our 2020 mandate with the Urban Water Management Plan. We're continuing above that. Now, what happened is 2013, we were conserving quite a bit compared to other cities, and that was what the governor did as a baseline. We were ahead of the curve comparing to other cities.
Well, what do we show, 40% over in the winter, and everybody else is 36% under? Has that been explained?
In the winter months, traditionally, it's going down, but we weren't... We were... What month particularly are you talking to?
No, 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 let's don't get into a conversation. We can get in conversation later on.
You can contact me, Mr. McRitchie, and then we can... I'll see if I can...
Of a baseline of 2013, which should not have been the baseline, in my opinion. Yes, we do. And you tell the facts, and it doesn't get reported?
Right, exactly. We haven't seen anything, but it's going to be about the conservation lifting or anything.
I need to make just one quick comment so Maricel is aware of it. I've had several people contact me today about the wells not being correct. I looked at my own bills. We've got one on a lot, and our household bill. Part of the problem seems to be on my main bill for my household. They give me a date for the coverage period, April 30th, I think it said, but there was nothing else following that. And several people have told me they've gotten something similar. And then on another bill that we have on a piece of property that's just a lot, the fee looked okay, but they gave a coverage period of August 25th to August 29th. And again, I talked to some people that have got something similar. So, I wanted to prepare you, because you may be hearing more of this as it goes along, and it sounds like it's in the software again.
Any further public comment? We'll move on to the consent calendar, consistent with item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of the May 24th, 2016, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3B1, approval of May 31st, 2016, Special City Council Minutes. Item 3B2, approval of June 28th, 2016, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3B3, approval of July 19th, 2016, Special City Council...
Item 3B-3, approval of July 19th, 2016, Special City Council Minutes. Item 3C, adopt a resolution approving and authorizing a new wastewater management treatment plant maintenance technician trainee, one and two, job classification series, and respective salary ranges. Do I have anyone wishing to move or comment on any of the items?
Yes. Go ahead.
I have, there is a, there needs to be a correction on item 3B-3 for the July 19th minutes, I was not there and it states that I was there.
Yes, that, that will be corrected.
And I would like to pull item 3C for a short discussion, a couple of questions.
Okay, anybody from the public wants to pull any items or address any item? All right, with the correction being noted, I'd like to have the council take action on item 3A through 3BC, 3B-3.
I move that we approve the consent calendar with the exceptions noted.
I second it.
We have a motion to approve item 3A through 3B-3, and a second.
Council Authority Member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item 3C.
Just a question about the position itself, the funding, and why we decided to go through the process of combining the positions, if someone could explain that.
Sure. So this position is not a new position, what we're actually recommending is replacing a current wastewater treatment plant operator position into a trainee and technician position. What we would like to do is be able to add additional job duties to this classification in order to bring that more in line with what's necessary out at the wastewater treatment plant, and to be able to avoid having to contract out services for that. And so rather than making a new position and hiring a subsequent person to be able to come in, we would just be replacing a currently vacant position with this position. In terms of the budgetary impact, this position has been vacant for over six months now, and so we do have salary savings that would be sufficient to cover this fiscal year. In future fiscal years, we have the rate increase that ticked this into consideration.
Is this, over time, a cost savings measure?
Yes, it will be a cost savings measure.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion for item 3C?
I'll move that we approve item 3C.
I second.
We have a motion to approve item 3C, and a second.
Council Member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item 41, second reading by title only, and adoption of proposed ordinance number 2016-006 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California. Amending the Riverbank Municipal Code by appealing in its entirety, Chapter 151, Flood Plane Management by Title 15, Land Usage, and substituting it with a new Chapter 151, Flood Plane Management, and amending Chapter 152 and 153 to address the requirements of California Senate Bill 5, 2007, and associated legislation related to the provisions of the 200-year flood protection to the California urban areas.
Mayor and council members, the council received a full staff report on this item at the August 23rd City Council meeting. At this second hearing, the city council may now consider its adoption.
At this time, are there any public comments on item 41? Say none, is there any questions or comments or recommendations from the city council on item 41?
Make a motion that we approve item 41.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve item 41, and a second.
Council Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Public hearings, item 51, adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving the general plan amendment to modify the typical street design by classification and type illustrated in table CIRC-2 of the Riverbank 2005-2025 General Plan Circulation Element.
Mayor and council, we have John Anderson from the consulting firm of J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning that will provide a report on this item.
It's Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning, contract planner with the city. This is an item that's, it's been on our work program list for quite some time, it's one of the residual issues of cleanup in the general plan. Probably the best way I can describe it is if you look at the circulation diagram per the adopted general plan, it's, I don't know what page it is in your staff report, but it breaks down the roadway classifications, you know, by arterial, collector, and access road, and if you look at these dimensions, it just doesn't, doesn't really make much sense as we physically try to build these roadway segments. Since this general plan was adopted, the city's actually gone in and revised and updated their street standards to conform with, you know, our stormwater obligations, to conform, quite frankly, with what we physically have out there in the field, plus what we believe is necessary in the future. So what this is, is this is an effort to true-up, if you will, this circulation table in the general plan to what we know is, we're able to build, and certainly to be consistent with what we've recently adopted for the street standards. And we're actually starting to put that into implementation with some of the newer subdivision projects and development projects that we're working with, and that Donna Kenny's working with, with her staff. So after having said that, I have a short, short presentation, this is a general plan amendment to the circulation element, and it's, we're simply just modifying table circ- -dash-two, so that's, there's the existing table, as well as what we're proposing, both in your staff report. So after I've kind of went over that, so again, we're trying to achieve consistency here, not only between our adopted standards, but also between the existing conditions and also planned projects, you know, and of course, our general plan. And then the project does involve a general plan amendment, and we're specifically wanting to match right-ofways adopted with street standards, we're talking about adding bike lanes, because now we're talking about complete streets that are available not only for motorized vehicles, but also for pedestrians as well as bicyclists, so it's pretty, it's kind of really important. We were dealing with a planter strip, which is an area typically that's behind the curb and before the sidewalk, that's of sufficient width that allows us to use that for pre-treatment of stormwater, which is pretty significant, and then also allows us the opportunity to put, you know, some trees and shrubs and stuff that can grow within that area and then have sufficient space, so that's also very important as part of these standards. So again, we're not talking about modifying these goals, these goals are consistent with what we're suggesting here, we're simply restating what those goals and policies are in the general plan. And then this is the table that I was referring to earlier, that's part of your staff report, this is part of the adopted general plan, there is quite a bit of confusion as to, you know, where the planter strip might be, and then, and then how wide the sidewalks and paths might be, and then what type of right-ofway are we talking about, you know, do we need to go on a commercial arterial situation up to 144 feet of right-ofway? So there's, there's some issues here that we needed to get resolved, and the other is that when we're in a residential condition, where the attempt is to kind of return the street to the neighborhood, so not have it be so broad, but have it be capable of accommodating the pedestrians, bicyclists, as well as vehicular traffic, so that's, that's obviously pretty important as well. So what we came up with was the same, same three categories, arterial, collector, and residential, but to be more consistent with what we're seeing in the field, you know, we're planning the right-ofway widths, on arterial as an example, up to 126 feet, which is what we've already done on Oakdale Road as an example, and then medians of 12 to 20 feet, you know, travel lanes four-plus, and then lane width at 12 feet. And if you look at what we're doing in the residential category, we're actually suggesting a narrower travel lane of 10 feet as opposed to 12, but we're also asking for planter strips of sufficient width, you know, nine to 14 feet, nine feet, nine feet, and then only in cul-de-sac conditions will we allow it to be reduced to four feet. So, so the whole purpose behind this is to gain consistency and to allow us, you know, a policy that we can physically build and develop and move forward with, in light of all the other, you know, constraints we have with development. The project is exempt from CEQA, it's another general rule that applies only to projects that potentially cause significant impact, any project that's implemented, you know, that uses these standards has to go through the normal CEQA process. We did present the same item to the planning commission on August 16th, and the commission, on a four to zero vote, recommended the city council adopt the proposed general plan amendment to replace the existing table circ-two with the new table that we've presented to you tonight. So we're asking you to approve the general plan amendment. So I'm going to go back to that table in case there's any questions. There you go. So that's, that's my staff report, this is a public hearing, all, all agencies have been notified, including the Native Americans, because this is, this is a general plan amendment, and it's required that we post notice with them as well. So are there any questions of what I presented to you tonight?
I have questions.
Sure.
On bike lane for residential?
Yes.
You have no?
Well, typically, in a residential condition, you're talking about residential streets, the bike lanes are actually, you know, in the street themselves, and there doesn't have to be a specific designation for it. If you have a collector street, kind of like, kind of like Crawford, you would have to deal with a bike lane, you know, in, in the pavement section, which is what's been suggested, or in an arterial condition, you'll, actually, in many cases, it's going to be a Class One independent bike path outside of, outside of the travel lane.
We'll come back to the council after the public hearing.
I'll sit down then.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public may come up and address specifically this project? These changes to the general plan, important? Say no public comment, I close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for comments and/or direction. Any further comments?
Make a motion that we approve item 5.1.
Just a second, Mr. Anderson, we have been using these standards in some of the designs that we have presented before.
Yes, the answer to that, Mayor, is yes. The city, with staff's help and in looking at the LID standards that this council worked on, you know, with the effort of AECOM, to deal with the stormwater conditions that we have, you know, developed a set of street improvement standards that, quite frankly, this general plan amendment now is making everything consistent. And it's, and certainly, it's a lot more clarity from our perspective as we move forward. So there has to be consistency between, you know, what we're using in the field and what we have as a general plan policy document, and that's what we're trying to do here.
And is there any surprise to any of the developers or potential developers in the future about our requirements for streets?
No, no, and then, and in some cases, and in some cases, you know, we've, we're working with developers to, to allow these principles to move forward, but then to not adversely affect the projects they're working with. So it's kind of a balancing act, getting the travel lanes that we need, getting the bike lanes that we need, you know, getting the sidewalks of sufficient width, and then getting, you know, these parkway strips that can serve as pre-treatment for stormwater. So we're, we're kind of balancing all of those. Okay.
We have a recommendation to, to adopt the modification of the typical street design in circ-table two, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to adopt, and a second, of item 5.1.
Council Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item 5-2, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, for the approval of the proposed Development Services Administration encroachment permit fees.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members, tonight we are seeking your consideration of revised fees for Development Services Administration encroachment permit fees. So the, the current fee that we have in place is seventy-five dollars, and it has not been updated in over fifteen years, so it doesn't take into consideration additional staff time taken to review plans and to provide inspections. So the fee does cover plan review, traffic control review, NPDES permit review for stormwater, and our inspections. The current fee does not adequately cover these services, that's provided by our construction inspector, and the proposed fee are based on the average amount of time that it takes in order to perform these services. So this is a listing of the fee proposals, and you'll notice that several of these fees are only applicable to utility companies or contractors for new development. The one item that we do want to highlight is that the encroachment permit fee for sidewalk, curb, and gutter of seventy-five dollars for the property owner, we've decided to keep that fee the same so that there would not be, so there wouldn't be a large impact to our residential customers. And these are the other fees that are being proposed, as I mentioned, we have traffic delay notification, and the NPDES permit review, that one's based on the risk level and is applicable only to, to contractors for, for this purpose. And so tonight, we are recommending adoption of a resolution in order to approve these proposed fees for Development Services Administration encroachment permits.
And this is for a public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, I open it to the public for any comment.
Edward Jones, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, aren't we trying to get more businesses into Riverbank? If you're gonna, if I got this right, if you're gonna raise fees on everything, you're just gonna give everybody problems in getting a business going in this town. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's the way I look at it.
Do we have any further public comment? Say no further public comment, I close the public comment, and bring it back to the council for discussion and/or recommendation on item 5.1.
Maricel, you mentioned that it's, the fees that are proposed are based on the cost, the labor cost involved in reviewing. Have we looked at all at what other neighboring cities are charging?
Yes, in order to develop our fees, we also wanted to make sure we were in line with surrounding cities, so we did poll Stanislaus County, City of Series, we also obtained information from the City of Oakdale in order to make sure that...
That was additional feedback.
Yeah, just to make sure that our fees were in line, and so we, we did take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know.
Thank you. Any further comment and/or recommendation?
I'll make a motion that we accept item 5.2 as so stated.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 5.2, the proposed Development Service Administration encroachment permit fees, and we have a second.
Council Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item 7-1, staff comments.
Mayor, at this time, there are no staff comments.
Thank you. Item 7-2, council authority, council member Jones Cruz.
We don't have any comments for this evening, I'm going to go.
Council Member Campbell.
Just that, I know Tesla Motors down in the San Jose area is hiring right now, so if you know people looking for jobs, I know four or five people already in our town that have been down there that have gotten jobs recently, and they're still hiring, to my knowledge.
Talk to you about that. Council Member Barbara Martinez.
Just a reminder that September is recognized as National Preparedness Month, which means as a reminder that we all must take action to prepare now and throughout the rest of the year for any type of emergency that may, could affect us where we live, work, and also where we visit. Christian Food Sharing is having their spaghetti dinner Saturday, September 17. September 17th, from 5:30 to 7:30. You can either dine in at the community center or it's takeout. And just a reminder that we are gearing up for wine and cheese and wine October 8th and 9th.
Vice Mayor Tucker.
I know it's a couple of days late, but I just wanted to mention 9/11 and, you know, lest we forget, let's, let's never forget and always remember 9/11 and our first responders and honor them. And I just wanted to make sure, someone mentioned that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. My comment is an appendine report coming out from the California State Resources Water Board, and that is going to provide a substitute environmental draft that comes off in 2010. And in 2010, 35% of our water flow was taken away from us going down the rivers for the eating of fish. And fish is good. It's supposed to help spawn, you know, new population than salmon, and has done absolutely nothing along those lines. The water release timing is off, talk about bad timing with press, is off by about 60 days. You release the water, salmon doesn't, doesn't want to go up it yet, and after the water is released, now the salmon comes. And it's, the reason why, why am I telling you this? Well, Thursday, they're going to release another draft. Because it didn't work, they're going to take more water away from us. And they're going to do it in such a manner which will affect our ability for aquifer to replenish, because somewhere in the neighborhood, 40% of the aquifers is replenished through the rivers and through our, the method of, of irrigation, which is flood irrigation. They discount that, saying that that's, that's not right. They're not going to accept that, and they're going to take an increased amount of water away from us and put much more demands on it. And they may even take up to 65% of the water, 65%. So what does 40% mean? The increase from 30 to, 35 to 40 means 100,000 acres will be feralled, fallowed, excuse me, feralled is the cat, will be fallowed. And if, if we take the figures of last year, that each acre of farm earned 81.50 in dollars, $8,150, that is close to $1 billion being taken out of a tri-county area. Just a tri-county area. They may even give the total control, this is a strong possibility, total control to environmental groups who want to take control of the cold spots in, in the rivers. These cold spots are necessary for spawning, for development of, of the, the fish or the fries. Again, why am I telling you this? In this county, they want a unified front, and I was asked today to provide a unified front today so we could prepare a statement for Thursday to come out simultaneous. The state is going to say we have total concurrence in taking all this water for the fish and for conservation, for conserving other portions of, of the rivers and the delta. They haven't talked to us. They won't talk to us. We've invited them down. They won't come down. We've gone up. They won't listen. They won't let us talk. So it's not one that we're all together on this and everyone's accepting it. So if this report comes out as negative as we believe it is, the nine mayors and the city, I mean, and the, and the board of supervisors have already made a prepared statement that we oppose the sanctions that they're putting on us without providing us goals, metrics, boundaries. What if it doesn't work in five years? If the salmon's being killed by the predator, the bass and the trout that don't belong here, why don't we get rid of them? But they're not talking about that. They're talking about taking it away from the consumers, from the people, for their own needs. So I, the reason why I'm telling you this is that I, the Riverbank is opposed to it. And it will be out Thursday, and we'll probably hear about it on Friday. So I'll let anybody comment on that. All right.
I wouldn't be in your shoes if I was going to die tomorrow.
Thank you. All right. With that, we close the normal meeting. We're going to go into closed session consisting of item 5, 8.1, conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 Alpha. Name of case, Barnum Construction, Inc. versus the City of Riverbank, Court of Appeals of California, 5th District, case number Foxtrot 058692, and case number Foxtrot 059499. Before we go into closed session, the public will have the ability to comment on this topic before we go in. Is there any public comment? With that, I adjourn to closed session. litigation. Direction has been provided to staff. With that, this city council meeting is now adjourned.